Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the January 7th, 2014 City Council Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please give this council and the public patience as we go through the things that affect our community. Let's keep those men and women in armed services out of harms way. In your name we pray, amen.
Roll call Denise.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Morrow.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponse.
Here.
And Mayor Kennedy.
Here. Announcements, Michael?
Let Ole go first, his is shorter. Thanks, Michael. Flag football signups are now at the Rec Department of City Hall, open to all ages, if you're in grade three to five, so come on up and sign up, it's a fun thing.
And I have free ballroom dance lessons next Monday, January 20th, 6:30 PM at Tremont Hall. Gymnastics lessons this Sunday, January 12th. Three-year-olds through high school, register at the Rec Department. And senior meals and Meals on Wheels are programs supported by the city of Avalon and run solely by an independent group of generous volunteers. These volunteers help set up the senior meals at Singing Waters, pick up meals from restaurants and deliver meals to homebound participants of Meals on Wheels. Senior Meals and Meals on Wheels are seeking new volunteers to assist in helping their organization to continue. New volunteers are asked to donate their time, one or more days per week, Monday through Friday, 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM. Do you have a few hours to spare during your week to help this important service in Avalon? Interested volunteers are asked to contact Jen Monroe at City Hall, (310) 510-0220, extension 230.
Thank you, Michael. It's pretty creative that Jen gets you to do her bidding for you. Anything, Rich? Ralph?
Yeah, I got one. This is a plea to help an old vet that had been a long time resident of Avalon get back to Avalon. His name is Jack Diedrich. And Jack called me up from Barstow and he said, "I'm in the veterans home in Barstow, please get me out of here, I want to come to Have On." So, we're looking for a place for him, he's alone, he needs a room of some kind, he can probably afford about $600 a month. The VFW is there supporting him as much as we can to try to get him back here. So if anybody knows of anyone that might have a place for Jack to come back, he was a professional football player, I think his picture was at least in JLs when he was in uniform. And he served his country. And he, not only is a painter, but he's an artist. If you go into Topless Taco and look at that mural on the wall, that's what Jack did. So, he's hoping that we can get him there. He's on the list for Beacon Hill, he's been there for a couple of years. I don't know where he is on the list, but he's been on the list. I'm gonna try to go see the manager tomorrow and find out where he is. But if anybody's got any ideas, give anybody in the VFW or me a call and hopefully we can get him back. Thanks.
Thanks, Ralph. Ben, do you have any announcements?
I do. We'd like to recommend that you consider taking item number seven under General Business, the encroachment permit for Southern California Edison for underground utility vaults at two locations first this evening, if that is okay with you.
Okay, that'd be fine. Okay, let's just jump right straight to that General Business item then and then we'll come back to the presentation and our communication.
Okay, very good. Item number seven under General Business is an encroachment permit for Southern California Edison. Henckels and McCoy is the designated subcontractor for Southern California Edison on this project and you'll recall from the last City Council meeting that there are two vaults on Metropole that they are replacing due to the end of their lifespan. The City Attorney's Office and I, along with the Planning Department, have worked extensively with Southern California Edison and Henckels to ensure that all the conditions of the encroachment permit have been satisfied. We feel confident that they have done so. There is a schedule for the timeline of construction and outages that is attached to your staff report and available to the public. Also, Mr. Marvin Jackman from Southern California Edison is with us this evening and he can speak to you on any of the conditions or the permit in general.
Welcome, Marvin.
Why don't you approach the dice? Thank you, Marvin.
Thank you. First of all, Happy New Year to the council and mayor and council. As Ben mentioned, yes, we, since the last meeting, we've been working very hard on adjusting the schedule based on the council's request in terms of which vault we start with. As he also mentioned, the schedule for the entire project is in your report and I'm here to answer any question you might have.
Why don't you share with me who's going to be interrupted then on the, let's call this Phase One and Phase Two. So Phase One's going to be the one down by Coney Island in front of the Metropole Hotel.
Right.
When that, when you disrupt service there, who's going to be affected?
Right, so I recall that question being asked last time and when we do plan outages, a lot of cities want that information. And for confidential reasons, we don't give that information out. Also, for security reasons, we don't give that information out other than to the folks that are affected. And here's the reason why. If we provide that information to the public on if there's going to be an outage and who's going to be out, for example, if there's a bank out or somewhere where folks from the criminal element might get a hold of that information, then all of a sudden, they know that the power's going to be out and they have a chance to do whatever they do. So, we don't provide that information out to the public or the cities. What we do do is obviously, we're required by the commission to provide the individuals, businesses that are out at prior notice in 10 days. What we've done in this particular case is actually walk and trace the lines that are affected in the vault. And we've talked to all the businesses down there on individual basis and let those folks know what's going on. So they have been notified, they know what's going on. But again, we don't provide a list. Our lawyers advise against that.
If I could just interject quickly too, the other thing that we've asked that Edison and Henckels do is, where possible, try to show some love, if you will, to those businesses that are impacted. And so, as a matter of fact, the crews will be staying at one of the hotels that's impacted down there and trying to eat their meals in those restaurants that are impacted by it. The outages are taking place during the nighttime.
Right.
So, who better to disturb in the hotel than people that are actually not in the hotel but are out doing the work? And it is a sizable force that will be doing this construction project. I believe there's at least nine or 10 rooms that are being occupied in the hotel, I believe.
Council, any other questions?
Yeah, just, I have a question. Is it possible, or impossible, to bring generators over instead of knocking out the outages completely? Is it possible to keep everything still going online with generators?
Yeah.
Without causing an inconvenience to anything else?
Yeah, it's possible and we've actually offered information to those businesses who want to, for in this case, Vons, who might want to get a generator. We've given them certain vendors that can make that happen for them. But that's up to the customers' own premise to go ahead and do that. That's really up to them whether they want to use their funds to do that during that outage.
Interesting.
Well, if I could also interject on that, and Marvin, I don't mean to steal your explanation on this, but as a policy, the investor-owned utilities in the state of California do not offer generation during times of planned outage simply because those costs are ultimately borne by the ratepayers. And that's, as a policy, for all the investor-owned utilities, not just Southern California Edison, that is their standard procedure, simply because you, ratepayer, ultimately would end up paying for every outage that takes place because, as you might imagine, precedence would be set and it would become an expectation and a customary practice.
Yes.
The broadband Catalina broadband, 222 Metropole, right across the street from the vacant lot. That is a telecommunications hub that affects the whole city of Avalon, right there.
Right.
The signal right here is going through that building directly via fiber. There are also power supplies that are all around the town to power the equipment, to get basically internet and TV to the people in town. And what I've asked a city manager to do is to set up an appointment, maybe for Thursday, to sit down and for broadband chief engineer who is coming in tomorrow, to go down there and find out what areas are going to be, going to have no power. You know, we would go there, we're an emergency part, you know, we're a utility in it, basically. And, or their utility. So, we want to really know. You know, there might be something that's affected somewhere else and it might shut down a power supply and knock out about 200 people. So we want to really, really know because we sort of, we just don't have that one little area, we're sort of all over the place. So, I've asked a city manager to set up some kind of a meeting next Thursday with Edison that would see, you know, look at a map and see, this area will be out.
Right.
Okay? And we can look in that area to make sure we don't have a power supply because we've got a lot of equipment hanging on those telephone poles. And it's powered by power supplies and if we interrupt one of those, and the power supplies are powered by 115 volts, so...
Right, I took note of your comment last meeting and we actually had the folks from Henckels go down there and talk to those folks.
Yeah, he did. He came down, talked to me. The chief engineer, I'm not, I don't own that company anymore, the chief engineer is coming in tomorrow. And so I'm going to try to get him up there to Edison sometime tomorrow night or Thursday, one or the other. And Ben's going to try to facilitate that.
Our contractors here, through the duration, so we can accommodate that meeting.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah, anyone in the audience care to comment?
Yeah, I just have another question.
Yes.
Have you coordinated any of this with the fire department also? Have you gone through, because of the alarm systems that will be shut down, through the process and all that, have you coordinated with any of the guys at the fire department yet?
Yeah, we touched bases with fire and the sheriff's department.
It seems odd to me that you wouldn't step up and just take, do you know how many kilowatt hours are going to be disrupted?
How many hours of the outage?
Yeah, you know, like, what would the kilowatt demand be on the segment of power that will be disrupted?
Yeah, I don't have that information.
Because it seems to me if it's 20 kilowatts, we bring in a single 20-kilowatt generator, light it back up, and then hotels have fire alarms, hotels have lights, restaurants have freezer equipment, it just seems easier to me to identify those that are going to be disrupted, determine what their kilowatt demand is, and fire up a generator and provide them with the power during the outage and then nobody's affected. That just seems to be a reasonable recourse. I mean, I understand what Ben said, it's not standard practice, but there are businesses that are in that area that will have gobs of freezing material or whatnot that they can't just move somewhere else. I mean, other freezers are occupied, Vons would be impacted dramatically.
Yeah, I appreciate the comment. We've talked to, you know, obviously, most of those business owners, they all know about the outage. The gentleman at Vons mentioned, he said, "Okay, got it, we just want to open our freezers." That was one of the things I mentioned last time I was here. So they sort of know kind of what to do when they lose power. And again, it's, if they want to bring in dry ice or those kind of things, you know, that's why we're giving them enough notice to go ahead and do that.
So how many commercial properties do you believe would be occupied at the time during the outage? How many hotels would be affected? Can you tell me that?
I can't right now.
Because we basically, you know, through the fireside are going to require those in chief, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to ask those hotels not to have occupants during a known time of an outage, is that not correct?
Mike Crowe, Avalon Fire. I actually spoke to a gentleman named Roland. Roland, him and I spoke this morning and worked out any problems or issues that related to the fire department. And the alarm system is on a battery backup, so that system will continue to function and it'll be fed by battery backup. So as far as the fire alarm system and public safety, that's all okay. Probably just some issues with dark hallways and things like that, their emergency lighting should come on. And that's where issues like, where the hotel staff can just make sure that they have maybe asylum sticks or things like that in dark areas. But as far as fire safety goes, we've got it pretty well covered.
So we're going to allow those businesses to operate as normal through the outage?
There won't be any restrictions as far as the fire department's concerned.
Okay, okay, that was my concern. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Does the Hermosa have alarms? Does the Hermosa have alarms?
No.
Yeah.
The Hermosa does not, it does not require a monitor system because of its age.
No, it doesn't.
The Hermosa specifically is not a monitor business, it's not required because of its age, you can't unring the bell. There are many businesses and structures in town that aren't monitored because of when they were built. If they remodeled, if they made certain changes, then at that time, they would be upgraded.
But because there is no alarm, you're still going to allow them to operate?
There's no restriction as far as the fire department's concerned. From our standpoint, I'd much rather have Edison doing its due diligence and giving adequate, appropriate, in my opinion, notice than if Murphy could step in tonight and that vault, and correct me if I'm speaking out of turn, Murphy could step in tonight, that vault could collapse and we could be talking about businesses being out of service for 12 days, not 12 hours. So...
I know a few years ago, the Atwater system went down and you made it have a fire watch all night.
Correct.
Would you impose that same restriction on the Hermosa?
Sure, we'd ask them, right. We could ask them to do a fire walker, sure.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, anyone care to entertain a motion then on item number seven?
I'll move to...
More questions?
Whoa, question, I'm sorry.
Somebody in the audience have a question?
In that case, I'll move to approve the encroachment permit with the recommended conditions.
One second. Call for a vote, please.
All ayes.
All right, let's move back to presentations. We have Choices here this evening that would like to give the council and community a presentation.
Hi, I'm Judy Hibbs, representing Choices. Happy New Year. Choices is citizens helping our island children end substance abuse. We thank you for this opportunity to tell you about what we're doing in 2014. We have some of our board members here with us and we thank them for all that they do. Choices is a community coalition with people from education, healthcare, city government, private businesses, and other concerned volunteers. Everybody cares for the kids and many people want to help Avalon's youth. We all talk about what somebody should be doing about, you know, crime and kids not having enough activities and the lure of alcohol and drugs. But Choices is really doing it and they've had a number of activities since fall. We had, over the Christmas vacation, an open gym where 36 kids came out and just played basketball that was supervised by Carlos and Rhonda and Margie. And things like this are, there aren't enough of them and we want to remedy that. So I'm going to introduce Rhonda and she has some literature to share with the council about what she's doing. She's Choices Continuing Care Specialist. She works directly with the kids and she is paid by Choices, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. And she's going to address some of the activities and needs that the kids have right now.
And donations are always welcome.
Yes, we'll get to that. Hello. Yeah, I just wanted to touch bases with a few things that were kicking off this year that I believe will be a continued help for our young people here in Avalon. And for 11 years, we've had our peer mediation groups, which are groups that help young people learn skills, to help diffuse conflict peaceably on campus. And the administrators use those young people on campus to do different things that are needed on campus as examples, that these young people lead by their lifestyles. But this year, we are going to try something a little bit differently and to add to our peer mediation team and to our life issues team, which are two teams. Life Issues is a junior high group and that is a confidential group where young people can come and talk about the issues that they face. And it's very open and it works for these young people. They talk about a lot of things and it's helped a lot of young people. So, this year, we are starting to teach them some different skills, peer mentor skills also, in this class after we get through several months of allowing them to talk about some issues that they face because it really is intense. And the other thing we're doing is we're kicking off a new program, it's called Super Siblings. And what that basically is, is it is a program that our high school students, ninth through 12th, will be mentoring the junior high students that want to be mentored. And we have, at present, we have 61 kid junior hires signed up that they want to be mentored. So, what I'm seeing in our community of young people is a different thing happening. And I believe that Choices can help support what will be going on with the community involvement, with the police department, and with all of the administrators here in our community, to help supply skills to these young people so that they can have a life to choose the decisions that they want to do with some skills. And the paperwork that I've passed out to you shows some of the things that we kind of do. We teach them basic decision-making skills, listening skills, paraphrasing skills, stress. I mean, we just go down and teach these young people all kinds of things so that they can have a better lifestyle. When a young person goes into a place or into a party and they don't know how to communicate, where do you think they're going to motivate to? I think they're going to motivate, they're the other people who are sitting around going, "Yeah, okay." And I'd like to change that, that's what we're doing. So through Super Siblings, we're going to kick it off. We've actually been, so far, we've gone to camp already, training our peer mediators and had a great weekend doing that. But we are kicking it off on the 19th and it's not open to the public. It is, you know, it is on campus, but these high schools will be mentoring the junior hires. And last year, I had a real problem because I thought mentor is a big word, but how do we do that? How can we have something successful and carry on through the years? And what I came up with is that kindness. Kindness is vital. And each one of the kids, as you see on the front page here, these are the attributes that the young people who came to these meetings said that they would like to see in Super Siblings. This was from themselves. And so, they signed this paper saying that that's what they would like to do. And so, the basic focus starts with kindness. From there, we are now, and have been, teaching our peer mediators how to mentor. So this will continue to go on. We're doing that now in the life issues group, which I believe will really, really increase the, you know, their ability to be able to have some skills, to do some different things in their lives and to make positive choices. And so that's what we're really pressing for this year. We have lots of activities that we have coming up planned. Carlos is on board, he's on fire and as far as activities go. And I'm really excited about what we're doing, you know. And I just want to thank the community as a whole because you have come behind us and you are supporting us and we appreciate that. And the work isn't done yet, but I want to acknowledge that because there's a lot of people who have given and I really want to thank them from the bottom of my heart for giving in to the young people of this community. So, thank you. So we have an open house for Choices that's coming up on Monday night, January 13th, at 6:30 in the A8 bungalow, which is right back here behind City Hall. We'll leave the porch light on for you. We're going to have appetizers and bottled water and a lot of folks who care about kids there to brainstorm, discuss the issues, what are the problems, what are the solutions. Of course, we need money, as Councilman Ponse said. Lunchtime snacks, Rhonda is often providing the peanut butter and jelly sandwiches out of her own pocket money and to get event snacks when they have something. Margie is opening the concession stand and, you know, kids don't have any money on them and it's like, "Well, you know, I didn't get any dinner before I came." And so, there's a lot of needs to fill for these kids. Also, we have a fundraiser coming up in February, late January, and the first two weeks in February is we're going to be selling Sees candy, which we did not do in December and so people have been asking us, so we've decided to do it for Valentine's Day this year. So you'll be seeing Choices, volunteers, and friends in the Atwater Arcade for the late part of January and the first two weeks in February, selling Sees candy, so we would ask you to support that. We just really need to be in the prevention business. Rhonda's talking a lot about positive decision-making and skills, but there's a lot of kids that have already headed down the wrong track and have made bad decisions. I know my golf cart was stolen and a number of other people have been burglarized, there've been issues with, you know, who knows what's going on with some of the youth. And everybody feels bad about it, but we need to, we need to not only recognize the kids that need to be reeled back in, and Rhonda does a lot with counseling with individuals as well as families, to help kids that have started down that wrong path to maybe reorient their life, make better choices, and come back into a healthier lifestyle. But we also need to work with the kids that are so vulnerable, especially the middle school kids, which life issues and some of these mentoring opportunities will do. So, we have a Facebook page, Catalina Choices. We have a website, catalinachoice.org, and there is a PayPal option on the website if you'd like to make a donation. We thank everybody for their generosity at the end of the year, appeal letter, and it's not too late to mail that in. We're discovering new things about Avalon all the time and we have a discovery post office box, which is really easy to remember the number. It's 1492, just like the year Columbus discovered America. So, I also ask that the community and the council and the business leaders especially acknowledge Rhonda and Carlos and Margie who really worked directly with the kids and encourage them because they are on the front lines dealing with some of these. And life issues, we're talking about hard things that these kids are dealing with in their home situations, in their relationships with their peers, with their teachers, with learning disability problems, with bullying, with temptation to smoke, drink, try drugs. They have some very, very difficult things to face at a very young age. So, we want to encourage the people that are doing the work as well as the kids, catch them in the act of being good. And so we hope that many of you will come out Monday night to our open house and look for us in the arcade and we will always be offering you good things to eat, either at our meetings or at our Sees candy sale. So we thank you for your support.
Thank you for all the hard work. Yes, Ralph? Yes, you can.
I want to compliment you. I was there at the beginning, 11 years ago, and we saw the reason, the reason why we started it is because of some of the young kids in town would get hooked on these, on different drugs and could not kick it. And they would have to go in for rehabilitation. And Don Sampson and I went to Hazleton... And Don Sampson and I went to Hazleton and spent a week there with them, riding, riding on the backs of parents whose kids hit bottom. They got so, so into drugs that they had no way out. We talked to some kids that were sleeping in vacant lots. Their family kicked them out, all the way to the end. They went down as far as they can go. And we watched the parents and Hazleton people do some remarkable things. Hazleton is one of the best rehab centers in America. And at the time, they were, they were funded by the Off-Fill Foundation. And to send kids there costs a hundred thousand dollars for a thirty-day program. And we sent kids there, and there was some improvement. And I'm really happy to see that now you're blossoming out, and you're doing preventative stuff, which is really, really, really important. So you guys are looking good. Hopefully, this will help. Thank you.
We applaud the effort. Oral communications. Anyone in the audience have any business before the council that is not on our agenda? You may now come forward. Nothing, Jen?
Yes, George.
Thank you, Michael.
She has her surrogates now.
Okay, consent calendar.
Yes, Mayor, there are six items on your consent calendar this evening. Item number one pertains to actions from the meetings of December third and seventeenth. You have expenditures submitted for approval. You have an administrative policy pertaining to the vehicle noise ordinance, the annual report on the development agreement between the city and Hamilton Pacific LLC, a contract for project management services, and an RFP for the Joe Machado Field Concession Stand lessee.
Okay, there's six items on our consent calendar. Would any member of the audience care to have us discuss any of the six items that are currently on our agenda?
Can you pull one of the LCG?
Okay. Number five? Okay. Anyone else in the audience? Counsel? Okay. I wouldn't mind having Jordan come to the podium on item number three and share it with the public, since maybe not everybody had the opportunity to read the agenda.
No, that's great. We'd welcome that.
Okay. So the remaining four items on the agenda, do we have staff, I mean, council recommendation on approval?
I'll make a motion to approve items one, two, three, and six.
One, two, four, and six?
Oh, one, two, four, and six, sorry.
Marge had something to say about six, maybe.
Marge, do you have anything to discuss on the RFP process?
On the lease.
Let's, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and pull the items so that you can have some podium time with us. That would be good for you.
I'll second Michael's amended motion.
Okay. Call for a vote, please.
All eyes.
Okay, item number three, Jordan.
He snuck out.
Oh, he ran off.
He ran off.
Okay, so let's take this in reverse order, just to make it entertaining.
Sure.
Let's talk about the RFP for Joe Machado Field Concession.
Sure. For that, I'd like to call Mrs. Monroe to the microphone, please. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you. Yes, we, as you know, we are starting construction on the concession stand, and we'd like to have a contractor in place before the construction is complete, so that they will be turnkey-ready to go. And so we are, we have put in RFP in this staff report for you to approve, for us to go and advertise for a concessionaire. It is significant, it was different enough from contracts that we had proposed in the past, that we felt it needed to be re-advertised. And so the, what we're proposing is that the concessionaire would be there for a term of four years, sign a, sign an agreement with the city for four years, and then they would be able to have the operation of the concession stand for any league games or events that are happening up there, as well as be able to utilize that kitchen as a commercial kitchen for their own off-site catering, as well as any other times that they would feel that it would be profitable for them to open, say, a summer day where there's hikers going by, or bikers going by, sell them a picnic lunch, or, you know, things like that. All of this in an effort to increase their viability of their business and their revenue stream, which would in turn, of course, have the city see more money in the form of rent from them. So we're excited to put this out to bid. We think this is a really exciting opportunity for, for a local in town here.
Thank you, Jen.
Mm-hmm.
Would you like to comment, Marge?
Well, I'm not real excited about it going out to bid, but there's probably not really much I can say about it, is that I've been working really hard for it for five years or six years in June. And I'll put my, you know, application in, just like everybody else, and, you know, what can I do? So we'll just take it from there. I just wish that you would consider all the things that I've done and hard work that I put into it, so, I mean, it's up to you, not me.
I'm, I'm certain that that would be part of the consideration, but this also changes the, the framework of which you were previously operating, changes significantly with the installation of this kitchen. It also changes the rules of which you were forced to work with under. So this gives you the opportunities to do, to think outside the box and do things that better your operation as well.
Exactly. I'm excited about it.
But based on us changing that and not having, you know, a bona fide agreement with you that was executed, we're kind of forced to kind of reinvent the wheel.
I get it. It's just...
We've appreciated your hamburgers and hot dogs and snacks and good treats.
Chili dogs, thank you.
Chili dogs, too.
Thank you. Well, just keep me in mind.
So we definitely, we definitely recognize your accomplishments.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You bet.
And in fact, one of the criteria, there are like five or six criteria, and one of those is your experience with providing this. So, you know, that is a factor that must be considered.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Marge.
So I make a motion to approve item six.
Second. And call for a vote?
All eyes.
All right, item number five. Annie?
Annie? Item number...
Item number five.
Ann Marshall, three-three-oh, Descanso. If the council wouldn't mind, and I don't know if it's Ben or is Gina here this evening? Yes. If you could elaborate a little bit more on the types of services that will be provided. I understand, and I read the staff report, and maybe I just missed something, but this is the third extension, and somebody told me that these have been six-month extensions.
They're actually monetary-based. This is a twenty-five thousand dollar amount extension.
It's not a time limit.
It's not a time, right. So it depends on the amount of hours expended drawing down from that.
Okay, so the eighty-four fifty, which is the reduced rate, is only for a maximum of twenty-five at this point.
That's a billable rate, and I'd also like to point out that that rate is not what the contractor actually directly receives, because the contractor works for a firm, and that covers things like retirement, workers' compensation, vacation, sick leave, et cetera.
Yeah, totally understand it. But we're only looking at this point to a maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars? Is that what you're saying?
Right. That's what this extension would authorize, and Gina and I are working closely to really fine-tune the priorities and the projects that we have assigned to her, and they're all coming from the city manager's office, and they focus on the area of budget, on human resources management, and preparation for collective bargaining.
Can you explain to me just a little bit more about the human resources side? What does that entail?
Sure, certainly. So Gina is a management consultant professional, and so when I need something like, perfect example, Gina's working on our wage and compensation and classification RFP, which we hope to bring for the council to review in the next couple meetings. So Gina is helping to put together that package. That would be just one example of some of the human resource work that she does. A lot of the work that she does is confidential in nature pertaining to compensation and benefits and so forth. Again, as I also indicated, she's helping us prepare on the management side for bargaining with the employee associations.
Okay. And on the IT side, what is kind of the goal in the IT direction? Because for those of us who don't know what that is...
No problem. We are in the midst of a massive infrastructure technology upgrade, and Gina, along with Pat Grady, who's our IT consultant, has been overseeing that effort and the interface with Catalina Broadband and the employees. So we were basically coming from a position where we were about fifteen years behind to the modern day. In fact, tonight is the first time that we've been able to, on the internal side, not yet the external, we will get there, have Wi-Fi in the council chambers. So there's a number of things that we're doing to bring the city forward that Gina is helping with, because she has expertise and knowledge in that area.
And then, again, just so that people know, so she puts together a package that says, like, "We need something," because I'm not an IT person, "so we need something more in computer, computer capabilities and reporting," or things like that?
Well, actually, that's the role of our IT consultant. Gina often acts as a go-between for specific assignments. So, for example, all the meetings with Catalina Broadband to upgrade the fiber link to City Hall, and the negotiations that went along with that Gina orchestrated and oversaw for us.
Okay.
Among other items.
Well, I'm sure.
She's a, she's a go-to person for me, that I rely upon heavily, and I feel that for that small amount of money, the city derives a tremendous benefit.
No doubt. Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for the clarification.
You're welcome. Anyone else care to comment on item number five from the audience? Anyone care to entertain a motion then on item five?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in two seconds. Call for a vote.
All eyes.
All right, Jordan.
He's back in the room.
He has a prop.
You're being monitored.
That's why he ran back there.
So here it is. This is the monitor that everyone's going to get to drive-by. So we're going to be testing, basically, the purpose of this is to create a standard operating procedure for this administrative policy that we're trying to implement enforcement of Avalon Municipal Code, section four-dash-four, point one-seven-one-three, vehicle noise, as we discussed in the December seventeenth meeting. It establishes noise limits for the vehicles, autowets, trucks, and motorcycles. And council directed us to kind of enforce it, tying it in with the vehicle registration, which begins February first and ends March thirty-first, to test the vehicles, and if they are not compliant with noise, they have six months at the end of vehicle registration, so until September thirtieth, to get their vehicle compliant, and then enforcement will go into effect at that point. So it's, this is kind of a timeline to give people an understanding of what it is that's going to be coming up, that they're going to have to deal with it, give them a little bit of notice, and give them some breathing room to accomplish, to meet the regulations that have been on the books for a long time, as opposed to saying, "We're going to start enforcing it tomorrow," which was another option as well. But, so this is to try and give people a little bit more notice to be able to make their vehicle compliant.
We'll be publishing this in the paper when we put out the notice for...
We are not only going to publish this in the newspaper, we've already ran an article in the newspaper discussing, you know, what was the results of the December seventeenth meeting.
It was a very good article.
It was a very good article. And, and we are going to have not only public, more publications in the newspaper, but we're going to put flyers around town, we're going to use our email blast system to let people know what's going on. We're going to try and inform people as much as possible prior to them showing up to register their vehicle, to alleviate the added difficulties for staff to enforce it. So the more that people come prepared and get their vehicle tested, we've had conversations with Catalina Yamaha and Buffalo Motors, briefly saw them, and talked about what it is that we're going to be doing, and so they're aware of the process that's coming up, so they can plan ahead and help take state of it. So we're, we're going to get the word out beyond just these small efforts, so that everybody's as formed as they can be, if they're paying any attention at all.
Awesome.
Yeah. It's going to be, it's going to be exciting. So we just got this in today. We're going to plug it in. We'll be testing a lot of city staff's vehicles, seeing how the process actually works. My, my goal is to get the whole process down to about less than five minutes per vehicle for the test, and then they will have a piece of paper that they'll take in that either says they passed or failed, and then they'll continue with the regular registration process. And then, in September thirty, September thirtieth, that's when enforcement of the ordinance goes into effect.
Rumor has it the code enforcement vehicle won't pass.
Annie has a question.
As you said, is, those who are in violation, is one of this code enforcement that, if you want to follow, um, be able to have a license compliant?
Yeah, one of the policies, the way, one of the things we were looking at is, vehicles will not possibly be given their full official city sticker. They'll be given a temporary sticker that notes that they are not in compliance. And then we have the noise meter. They could be tested. The ordinance also states that it's offensive to normal hearing, so if they drive by, code enforcement can stop them and say, "Hey, we see that you weren't compliant. You still don't sound like you're compliant. We're going to write you up, or you'll come up and we'll test you specifically." So all those vehicles will be noted, and then we'll be, yeah, citing them and ticketing them.
Is this all...
Yeah. This, it applies to all vehicles. The municipal code calls out different vehicles. We're specifically starting with autowets during the registration process from February first to March thirty-first, and we're going to definitely continue to expand and implement and enforce as we're capable. But it does apply, as per the code, to all vehicles.
But we're not going to do the enforcement of the noise ordinance until September thirty, October first.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
So it gives people time, gives people the summer to work on their vehicle. Notice has already gone out. A lot of people are becoming aware of it, and it's just one step in taking on all these transportation opportunities that we have in the community. And I think it's getting a lot of traction, because it's been something that's been talked about for the last fifteen, twenty years, and I think people are finally ready to make it happen. So we're going to make it happen.
Well, Jordan, I appreciate allowing me to put you on the spot and have you run off and grab your, your props and come back up here.
Well, I just got to, I mean, I got to show it off. It's pretty, very exciting.
But your, your presentation here at the podium was certainly more enthusiastic than your staff report, so thank you.
They're cruel. You're cruel. No, he did a great job.
Okay.
Motion on?
Yeah. Anyone care to entertain a motion then on item three?
I'll make a motion to approve item number three.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in two seconds again.
All eyes.
All right, back to general business, item number eight.
Yes, Mayor, item number eight under general business is a plastic bag ban presentation and corresponding discussion. This is at the request at the last meeting from Councilmember Hernandez, and Ms. Audra McDonald has prepared a presentation, which should be in the back of your packet, a hard copy for you to follow along with. In addition, we are going to be projecting it against the wall, as we normally do. Give us a moment to get set up.
I'm impatient, as usual. While this is getting ready to load, I have to say, I'm really excited that this is before us, personally. So I hope everyone else is, too. So, let's go forward. Some of these are pretty, answer themselves, it's mandatory, but why ban plastic bags? Communities free of plastic bags lead to healthier oceans, rivers, free of plastic, and I think it kind of goes with our whole philosophy in having a clean, clean ocean for everyone. Why are they so important to coastal communities? This talks about how it actually has been shown to break down and enter the food chain, which can't, can't be good for any of us, right? I don't want to eat plastic. Cleaner community protects, preserves our natural resources, reduces litter, and protects our beaches. This is what I found really interesting when I was, when Ben asked me to start doing, to put this together, is that... put this together, is that over 90 California cities and counties have already implemented plastic bag bans. City of Los Angeles recently, Scott's nodding his head, one in three Californians already live in a community where plastic bans are banned. Eighty percent of our visitors are Californians. So they're all pretty much trained. I'm sure there's ways that we can let them know before they hit our shores that they have to use that plastics banned and that they need reusable bags. This is kind of hard to see, but it kind of gives the timeline of the plastic bag ordinance, starting in the 70s, when the plastic bag started becoming prevalent, to now. And it shows countries that have actually, whole countries that have banned the use of plastic bags or single-use bags. Legal challenges. California courts have continually upheld the rights of cities and counties to ban plastic bags in their community, the most recent one being December 15th. No?
The most recent one was yesterday.
Oh, okay. You're, well, okay, I didn't research, but they still upheld it, yeah?
Yeah, yesterday, the, an appellate court in San Francisco held that the plastic ban prohibition is categorically, can be categorically exempt from CEQA. In other words, you do not have to do an environmental impact report if you're going to ban plastic bags.
Which is good news. So the next steps for the city of Avalon are to, I think the next steps, I kind of jumped right ahead to that we're banning plastic bags. So I just skipped right ahead to what we're going to do. So determine what the merchants can charge for paper bags. And a lot of cities, it's 10 cents. I think that 25 cents seems reasonable in Avalon, just because of where we are. I think we need to read, or obviously reach out to the business community, determine the procedures for banning the plastic bags, have the planning director determine the correct CEQA category, which seems like it's already been handled. Or we can tear off the county of Los Angeles, who did a full-blown EIR, and then determine when the ban should become effective. Additional steps include adopting the ordinance, educating the community, and promoting the use of reusable bags. And I, personally, I think that it's an opportunity for businesses to brand themselves. You can, Catalina Express can have reusable bags at the Long Beach, at their terminals. Catalina Island Vacation Rentals, who I can't believe isn't here, he's almost always here, could have an, oh, right. But no, I meant that Kevin's usually here piping in, so he must be on vacation. I just think there's a lot of opportunities and I, I mean, I know I go to Long Beach and I forget reusable bags all the time because I get on a boat. So I either pay for a paper bag or I buy a reusable, but it doesn't upset me. And I just think we don't need the litter. And I, and I think it's a great idea. Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez, for bringing it to our attention. That's it.
Maybe Leslie or somebody from the audience, Bob?
Yeah.
Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. I want to thank the council for considering this and for all the hard work that you do. Just a few facts to add on. Audra, you did great. Did really well in your presentation. Hawaii, Kauai and Maui are plastic ban, have a plastic bag ban. Just to consider other islands, also the Outer Banks of North Carolina, all those islands have a plastic bag ban. A little bit of facts, I did meet with Mike, our local Vons manager, and also the night manager. They are currently keeping track of how many bags are used. Offhand, in the winter, 30,000 plastic bags a week is what they think. Okay? Do the math, that's over a million and a half plastic bags a year. I also did the weight, just because those are all not recyclable at our dump, which I did speak with Cheryl about. That comes out to, assuming they all went in the landfill, 23,000 pounds of waste going directly into our landfill. So those are some other factors to consider when you're thinking about why this is important for Avalon. I've been collecting signatures. Surprisingly, over half of my signatures are from people on the mainland who are very excited that we would consider this and are used to it. They're like, "Hey, we do it all the time, no big deal." Thank you, Catalina Island Vacation Rentals. They already give every person that comes in to rent a house, one of these reusable bags. I spoke to several hotel owners, and they would be willing to provide reusable bags in the hotel rooms to just encourage our people to be prepared. Currently, I've been kind of taking a survey about our stores in Avalon. I've only covered 23 stores. More than half of those do use plastic. But fortunately, we do have some stores that actually only use paper and are already right there, ready to support a plastic bag ban in Avalon. So it seems like you're considering it. I know there's a lot of wonderful ideas out there to educate, to get the kids involved, to have it on the websites of all of the vacation rentals, hotels, the boats, get the word out. Recently, I went to Ojai as a vacationer. I didn't know. I had two reusable bags with me, so, you know, I had to pay the 10 cents for paper bags at their grocery. But it's really, I think people need to step up. It's part of your vision, your 2020 vision, to be green. And I think it's a positive thing, not a negative thing, for Avalon. So I just want to thank you for considering it.
Great, thank you. Don't run away. You might have, you might have more intel on a question I have. There are plastic bags, though, that are compostable, that break down, that don't negate their impact on the environment. Is that correct? Are they expensive?
I can speak to that only from personal experience. I use the green compostable bags for my compost, and they do break down. I don't know if the green bags you provide restaurants for their food waste breakdown, but those are a specific type of bag, and they really wouldn't work very well as a grocery bag because they're very thin. There are plastic bags that you do recycle, is that correct, Cheryl?
Yes.
So it's just the particular Vons ones that are so very, very thin that the equipment here on the island cannot recycle. I don't know about on the mainland.
So there's not a... I can tell you from firsthand knowledge, because I'm living this in Los Angeles, and I think it's either Target or Smart &amp; Final has just come out with biodegradable, they appear to be plastic bags, and I asked them. And they're not, but they're biodegradable, but they have the same, they look like plastic, they're just a lot thicker, but they are biodegradable. They started using those this week.
Well, why haven't they been used?
Well, that's, that's, that's the thing. I mean, we, right, exactly.
Or the hill sites.
Right. But in answer to your question, they do exist. And they're all, they also are more expensive, significantly more expensive than the paper bags.
And you also, they are a lot more expensive. You also have to find out what their actual lifespan is, because a lot of them that are advertised as compostable or biodegradable, actually, it takes years for that to actually occur.
So when they advertise, promote that, market it, they do break down, but it may, it may be in somebody's lifetime?
It could be five years. So you just have to be careful with that. And the ones that biodegrade quicker are obviously the more expensive. And they do almost do it instantly. I've used them too. Like, they last maybe a day or two with food in them, and then you've got to toss them.
Okay, thank you.
Wouldn't work for the doggy bags.
No, it wouldn't. No, it wouldn't. Okay.
What's our next steps, Mr. Harvey?
Well, council can give us direction to proceed in providing you with a draft ordinance for your consideration, or we can also put together a strategy, or we can do a number of things. I mean, I would suggest maybe, how about a strategy coming to you first with a timeline that you could then review and discuss? And then from there, we could then move forward. That might be the more thoughtful way to go about doing this, rather than just coming forward simply with an ordinance.
The only issue with the strategy is if we want to get this implemented before summer, then have it.
Well, if it's time-sensitive, then we can certainly provide you with a draft ordinance, probably by the first meeting in February.
Okay. Can I move that? May I move that?
Well, John just walked in the room. Did you want to comment on this item, John?
Just say no, John.
John, John, I apologize to put you on the spot, but you just came charging in the door, so I figured you were either... Okay, perfect. All right. We'll let John hand out business cards in the back of the room.
If I could just amend the timeline, Scott and I've discussed the need to just make sure that any proposed ordinance would not be subject to legal challenge. We think the second meeting in February is probably more realistic.
And the reason on that is, is that the San Francisco ordinance, which was just found yesterday to be valid under CEQA for finding it categorically exempt, has some specific factual findings specific to San Francisco. A year ago, there was a lawsuit arising out of the City of Manhattan Beach's ban. That court said that that ordinance was valid because it had some specific facts. And then Long Beach, about two years ago, had the same lawsuit. And their ordinance had specific facts applicable to that specific city. So our goal is, is we'll look at those three ordinances, tailor something to Avalon to give it the highest probability of succeeding. Frankly, given the fact that the Save the Plastic Ban Coalition has lost, I think, pretty much every lawsuit that they've filed, I think they're getting tired of it.
I'll amend my motion, but I would also like to amend my motion that it would be a phased introduction, where you start with the big bag store first, the Vons guys, and then phase in the littler guys and littler guys over the next, you know, 12 to 18 months.
Sure. And then I think what also this will allow us for is to reach out to the business community in advance of the meeting in February, telling them this is what our intention is. We're bringing this to the council for consideration. If you're interested, please provide your input now and/or come to the meeting.
And I would maybe suggest that we kind of stay away from determining the allowable cost merchants can charge for the bags, because then we're also going to classify what kind of bag it is. There's a, you know, dramatic difference between a paper sack that you're carrying, you know, five gallons of milk in versus a paper sack that you're carrying jewelry from. So maybe stay away from that one for a moment and see. Well, that may open Pandora's box, though. I mean, it's one thing for government to dictate, you know, policy. It's another thing to kind of get involved in metal and free enterprise. I think that might be a mistake. I don't know. So maybe include that in your presentation, what other cities and communities have done.
Sure.
That may be a slippery slope dealing with that one issue.
I think a minimum price encourages to, encourages the consumer to bring their own bags as opposed to just, "I'll get a, I'll get a paper bag at the store" as opposed to a plastic bag.
Okay. I would support a minimal cost versus allowable cost. And maybe that was just worded wrong in the intention.
Got it.
Why don't you second my motion?
So I'll second your motion, Emily.
And how many kids do you have at home? Five gallons of milk? I'm thirsty. Oh, jeez.
Call for a vote, please.
All ayes.
Success.
Okay. Item number nine under general business is a transportation permit amendment for bike Catalina. This item comes to you following approval at the November 6 vehicle hearing for an interior commercial permit. I believe that the applicant is here. So...
I need, I need to recuse myself from this. And give me a moment, I just got a massive cramp in my leg that I've been trying to... So I'm going to try to get up and get out.
Would you like us to wheel you out of here?
You might have to roll that chair.
Drink more water, Mike.
Eat some bananas. Drink a little water.
Okay, item number nine.
Okay, so this is the transportation permit. We brought this back. There's a request for additional information on this particular permit. We provided that in the staff report. I think one of the questions on this particular item was the justification for the vehicle as it relates to the business, which we tried to explain in the staff report, namely that it is the applicant's contention that the majority of his business takes place in the interior. His attempts to avail himself and his customers of other transportation sources, namely the conservancy, led to an unsatisfactory experience due to vehicles being booked or unavailable, and therefore leading to lost customers. So I do believe the applicant here, Mr. Lewis, is at the podium if you want to ask him questions about that. We also have our vehicle clerk, Mr. Dudley Morand, with us this evening as well.
Must be hiding.
Okay, Randy.
Randy Lewis, 356 Metropole. I'm available for, if anyone's got any questions about this. Basically, I've been doing this business for about five years now, and it was a learning process. And originally, all of our transportation needs were thought to be met by the conservancy on their existing shuttle. But as we all know, when you're dealing with the public, sometimes people don't plan ahead, and they want to go now. And the shuttle may not be available, the shuttle may already be sold out. And I would estimate that half my business, and this was the case that I made to the Vehicle Review Board, are pretty much spur-of-the-moment people that they want to go on a ride now. And three, you know, unanimous members of the Vehicle Review Board approved it. And I think the only step at this point is to go before you guys and approve my transportation permit. I think the business that we do, it provides a unique experience to the visitor. We're the only ones that actually do a drive-up, bike-down experience for visitors to Catalina. And it's, you know, we're rated really highly on Yelp, on TripAdvisor. We're rated in the top 12 things to do in Catalina. I think it's a real value-added thing for our visitor. And I think I made the case to the Vehicle Review Board that our business is, it's interior-based. The whole idea of the business is to get people into the interior. And you can't do that without a vehicle. So, you know, that's why I'm here.
Don't you also provide Avalon Canyon rides?
Do I provide what?
Avalon Canyon rides?
Occasionally, but that's a very small part of our business. Most of our, the biggest bulk of our business is driving up to the airport in the sky and turning people loose so they can bike down. That's the biggest part of our business. That's the, you know, probably 95% of it. We're in the same business as the Conservancy Airport Shuttle. We basically do the exact same thing they do. We drive people up to the airport, and then once we're up at the airport, they can hike, they can bike back, they can get in their private plane, and they can fly. And most of the airport shuttle buses, current airport shuttle buses, are on the same permit that I applied for. It's on a, it's on a limited permit. It's just for a interior-based business. And I see myself as being pretty much in the same business that they're in. I don't see any real difference. The only real difference is that I pay a 4% admissions tax and they don't.
And as I stated at the last meeting, it seems to me we're just jumping the waitlist. The vehicle, the vehicle carrying officer's report said that you said 100% of your income comes from the interior.
Okay, 99%, 90, I mean, most of it. I mean, I can't, I can't stay in business if I just do Avalon Canyon rides. I mean, I don't do any driving on the Avalon Canyon ride. We leave, we leave the plaza and we ride bikes up Avalon Canyon, and then we come back on the hour trail. That's then entirely, that's no driving at all in that business. So it's apples and oranges. There's not one vehicle used in that business. So the bulk of our business, the business where we need a vehicle is the airport business. The Avalon Canyon, you know, you did some good research on my business. But that tour does not require a vehicle at all. It's 100% bike.
But it's operated by Bike Catalina.
It's operated by Bike Catalina, yeah. And so are, you know, I mean, you know, the airport does other businesses besides the shuttle too. But their shuttle business is really the same business that I do. We bring people up to the... We bring people up to the airport.
I... As I see your business, it starts in Avalon, ends in Avalon. The airport shuttle generally starts at the airport and ends back at the airport when the pilot returns back. I think the transportation side of it is secondary.
Look at all the people that take the airport shuttle so they could hike the Soapstone Trail around the airport, and then they take the shuttle back down.
And I think that's a secondary, a major secondary.
It's still the same thing. They still start in Avalon and end in Avalon.
I believe the majority of the business of there starts at the airport and ends in the airport. I don't know, I just...
Well, I mean, you don't... Do you have any numbers to back that up? I mean, I don't want to get a...
The code says 100% has to be come from the interior?
The code says the sole source of income to the applicant is from a business located four miles outside the city of Avalon's jurisdictional limits. So I interpret that meaning that 100% of the business has to be the interior-based business. And the vehicle code hearing officer's finding was that applicant's sole source of income is from business, 100% of which is in the interior.
We haven't done an Avalon Canyon ride in a year. We have not. I mean, it's just not a popular ride anymore. It's something that we did, that, you know, we offered. But, you know, given the choice, people want to go up to the airport. They want to go into the interior, they want to see the buffalo, and they want to bike down. That's the choice. That's the choice that we give them. That's the option that they pick.
Well, I really like your service. I've watched it. I spent a lot of hours on that road riding bikes. And I know what a help it is to go enjoying a bike ride going downhill into Avalon from the airport.
It's fun.
I like what you're doing. And, you know, and I'm all for our visitors having the convenience available so that they can go when they want to go instead of waiting for a shuttle. And...
It's all about customer service. That's really...
Yeah, of course. That's it.
If I had an alternate method that was available...
And you've been doing this for five years.
Yeah.
It's not like you just came off the street.
No, no.
So, I'm 100% behind you. Whatever you need to keep that business going, I'm for it.
I think in a period where, you know, you're looking for businesses that are going to pay an admissions tax, I think the last thing we want to do is restrict that.
I have a question for Dudley.
Bring him up on his cage.
Uh-huh. In reference to the commercial vehicle waiting list, are you aware of anybody that's on that list currently that we would be putting Randy ahead of that have a commercial-based business that would involve the interior?
Not at this time, no. I don't see anybody that's... You can always... If there is an interior-based business, they don't always have to be on the waiting list if it's something that... We've done this before. Airport in the Sky. They did not have to stay on the waiting list. It was up to the council to decide that they could have an interior commercial permit, or up to the hearing officer first. And they have bypassed the list because it was the only way they could actually operate their business. Now, if you were on the waiting list and you already had a business out there, you would have to prove, "Well, I needed additional vehicle," or something like that. The conservancy would have to come in and make that claim.
What your municipal code specifically provides is that if you are going to be conducting a business solely in the interior, and you're getting an interior commercial vehicle permit, you do not have to wait in line if you can satisfy the conditions, which are that your business is going to be operated in the interior, your sole source of business is from the interior, and that once you get one... You only get one full-size vehicle, that's it. You cannot get another vehicle on the island. So, if those are... Those conditions are met, then you are exempted from the waiting list for commercial permits.
Thank you. Good with me?
Yeah.
Off-street parking is that?
Off-street parking is a condition...
Save the material, interior?
No. One of the conditions if... That the code says is if you are given one of these exemptions, that you have to park your vehicle off-street.
I have off-street parking. I rent two spaces from the Island Company.
I'll move staff recommendation with the condition that follows the conditions for the interior vehicles permit and subject to audit. And if not 100% of the business is outside of the city of Avalon, it would be subject to revocation. So that means no Avalon Canyon tour.
So I gotta, like, cut off a potential part of my business?
Yeah.
So... Yeah, that's a bike ride. That has nothing to do with the vehicle. It's a bike ride.
Okay, the way the code is...
Interior. Can I read it again?
It's like you're throwing out the baby with the bathwater, Ollie.
Well, again, what the code says is the sole source of income is from business located in the interior. And the vehicle permit said applicant's sole source of income is from this business, 100% of which is in the interior.
When I first made this application, the closest business I could compare myself to that operated in the interior was the airport in the sky, because we were going to the same place. And their business is conducted... Most of the people that ride up to the airport in the sky use their hotline phone in the plaza, which is not in the interior. You know, there's a lot of their operation that takes place here in town. So I think, you know, on a comparative basis, there's really no... There's very little difference between my business and that business. So I think if what's good for one, it should be good for the other. I don't think you can make a case that our businesses are significantly different. And in terms of, you know, what part of this is in Avalon and what part...
Well, I...
If we... If I can't get passengers out into the interior, I'm out of business.
No, no, I don't think that's the issue with Councilmember Olson's motion.
Okay.
Because obviously, selling tickets, you know, you can do that in Avalon. It's the actual operation of the business, which is the bike-riding portion in the interior.
Right.
And what the code says... And this is not something that the council's imposing tonight. What the code says is that 100% of your income has to be from an interior business.
So is 100% of the airport's income in... So, you know, that's where I'm going at.
Well, I don't know if... But this is, again, this is if you want to go to the front of the line to get a commercial permit.
They didn't... They went to the front of the line because they got the same kind of permit. They didn't wait in line for that. They got... It's an interior-based business permit. It is a special permit. It's not a waiting-in-line permit. It is a special-based permit based on an interior-based business.
Right. And the issue there is, I think, with Councilmember Olson's motion, is that to the extent that you're offering tours that are Avalon Canyon tours...
But there's no driving in that tour. That's a completely... That has nothing to do with the vehicle, which is what the whole point of this exercise is a vehicle permit. It's not a bike permit. It's a car permit.
Yeah, come on up to the podium so the public can hear you.
I'm trying. So you have the kayak business that goes into the interior. And he has a shuttle that takes the people to often to drive to kayak in the interior and brings it back. But he also rents kayaks in the harbor. So what is the difference?
He doesn't have a... He wasn't... He didn't jump the waiting list line for a commercial permit. So this permit that Randy's asking for is a permit to be excluded from the commercial waiting list and to be given this permit. And what Ollie's responding to is the code is specific.
The sole...
And it says the sole... The sole revenue that Randy would receive would be solely from that business at the airport and no other sources.
Well, I tried. That was a technicality I was working on.
Okay, Randy...
I sat for an audit a few weeks ago for the city for the admissions tax, and and one of the things that came out was not one of those Avalon Canyon rides that, you know, you so well researched took place in this last year. So in the entire year of 2013, we didn't do a single one of those tours. So it's a red hair.
Just de-listed. Don't offer it as an offer.
Because I offer it?
Yeah, because that's... You're doing business.
Okay, well, then, you know what? I'll change my brochure. I'll make that a condition. I'll redo 10,000 brochures, if that's what it takes.
I made my motion.
Okay.
Did you hear the second?
I don't know.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
You said that for the last year, your income was... The total income was from the interior.
All of it, 100%.
And you said the last time you did a ride up to the memorial and do the hour trail back was over a year ago.
2012 or earlier.
Okay. So, this car... This car permit gives you the right 100% of your income for Catalina bike. What about starting another business for...
So I can get two business permits?
Wow.
Okay, yeah, I guess I could do that.
I mean, that's the way to get around it anyway.
I guess I could do that, yeah.
Well, but what the...
That's business friendly.
The code says, again, the sole source of income to the applicant from businesses located. And so, they... The council back in 19 something...
Brilliant council.
1999, thought of that.
Randy, if you're not doing the Avalon Canyon ride,
the way the motion stands, you can go out and get your car and start doing your thing.
Okay, well, I guess all I gotta do is just change my brochure. I mean, it's on the brochure because we printed those things. It's the same brochure I've been putting out for five years. But, you know, I just sell what the customers want.
I'm going to second Ollie's motion and to follow with a statement that if the business economy or your direction of your company changes, then the only way that it could be modified would be then to come back to council and have that code changed. Because we're basically following the code. So there are other ways to skin the cat. Fortunately, you're not engaged in that activity today, so it's not harming your business interests today. But it may in the future. So I will second Ollie's motion and move staff recommendation with those conditions.
And the other option is, obviously, if you're on the list and eventually you would come up for it, you could modify this permit to allow for that.
Correct.
Or not say 100% business, say 90%.
Well, but the code says... Unfortunately, I'm...
I just find it kind of ironic that you'd want to limit, you know, any kind of activity that you can pay an admissions tax on, especially considering the fiscal situation the city is in.
And Randy, I thank you for going out and spending money and bringing a vehicle to the island so that you can generate another 4% into the city coffers when the conservancy's not participating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for a vote, please.
Four ayes, one abstention. Councilmember Ponse.
I will grab Michael. Thank you, Randy. Okay, city managers report.
No report, thank you.
Scott?
Nothing tonight.
Dean Ridge?
Yep.
Michael?
Good.
I'm good.
I want to compliment Denise. This is the second meeting in a row that the agendas come out electronically. So I haven't killed a tree. I have it on my little laptop. And I understand that we're even getting better and better at this and going forward, which is really kind of good. Thanks.
I got a couple things. Cheryl's in the room.
Cheryl's in the room.
And I don't mean to put you on the spot, and if you can't answer this question, you come back at a later time with it. Of the trash cans you guys have dispersed all over the residence, are there any... Is there anybody out there that you know of that is still waiting for trash containers? Sure. If you know that, then come on up.
And when we went to visit, we found one big, huge warehouse full of trash cans. So I know they have them.
Yeah, the only ones we're short on right now are the large, green ones, which we'll get on the next barge. Otherwise, yeah, we... Everybody's had gotten the trash cans and have ordered it.
And the reason I ask this question, it's apparent to me, it stands out like a sore thumb now, those that chose not to pick the trash cans or get the trash cans because the ravens are getting in the trash cans and the trash is everywhere. And I don't know how we implement this or at what what level of excitement staff has on this, but I would like us to kind of get to a place where those that have chosen not to get a trash can, that's fine, but there should be some requirement for them covering their trash cans and keeping the birds out of their trash cans and/or a fine as a result of not doing that.
You actually... Your municipal code covers that.
Right, but it's something that's obviously not enforced, and it's obviously one more thing for code to do.
We'd be happy to draft an administrative policy.
Because it may be easier just to require the residents to have these cans that are fairly bird-proof.
That's what I think.
Because it's becoming alarmingly clear that that what we... That the effects of having the covered trash cans was going to have on the community is certainly better, but it's certainly not... It's far from perfect.
So, yeah, so we could just simply enforce the code and we could establish a timeline that we're going to require full compliance and I'd have to review the code. Is there a citation that's...
One of the 26 projects that were... That I didn't put on our list...
Are you complaining?
Is... No, is we are updating our municipal code provisions for trash to include some of the contract provisions with CRNR. And so, if it's the council's direction, we can include in that updated trash ordinance a requirement that residents obtain these trash cans within a certain date from the passage of the ordinance, if that's council's direction.
Okay. Well, and to add to that, just to kind of, you know, stimulate some thinking a little bit, there are a couple of very targeted areas around our community where the trash cans are completely consumed, and so the trash lands on the ground, and/or there are youth of our community that are abusing hillsides. And it seems, you know, there's a few scenic drives around town, and when they're covered with trash and litter and doggy bags 50 feet up a hillside, we need to get our hands around that if we're going to, you know, impress a visitor. So, it's a mess.
Sure, so we can bring that back, and Scott and I are meeting tomorrow to talk about his long list of to-do items and when we think a date would be. Soon.
Perfect, late September.
Mayor Kennedy, I would just like to assure you that the code enforcement does send letters out to residents that have uncovered trash cans or unsightly areas. So they are currently doing that already.
And one of the reasons this is kind of a little bit of a pet peeve of mine is that there is an area between Whitley and the Canyon Hotel where the city has gone out and at their expense placed a couple of trash cans to make it convenient for people. And people are ignoring the trash cans or creating illegal dumping next to them because the city will haul it away, and/or the birds get in it and it's all down the hillside. So, we're trying to do a good deed and make a place for people to throw things away, and that hillside's never looked worse. Comment?
Thank you for bringing up the area right behind Tremont Hall, which looks way worse than it ever did before those two trash cans were there. The other thing I've noticed is the ravens are learning how. If the new trash cans are open even a couple inches with too much trash, the ravens have figured out how to get in there. I've been watching them. So, if possible, when you work on your ordinance, that the new trash cans also have to have the lid all the way down. I know it would be horrible to have to clip it closed because the trashmen would have to take time to do that. But I've watched... It's crazy that they've already learned how to get into these new cans. So, just something to consider. I love it that you're trying to clean up the town.
How about a raven bounty?
Well, I'm looking at approved tamping techniques.
Oh, wait. Can we ask for an update on the thoppen? Oh, wait, can we ask for an update on the falcon program?
Sure, so, the city, the Chamber of Commerce, and the island company are currently reviewing a draft contract provided by On the Wing Falcon Reef for nuisance abatement, bird services, we're working out the details, and I hope to get those resolved soon.
And do we have an update on the sewer line at Pebble Beach?
Looks great.
Mr. JH is not here tonight, I know that Mr. Lopez is here tonight, and perhaps Pastor, you could give a brief update on the gravity main, please?
David Clary's in the audience also.
Very good.
Pastor Lopez, Public Works Director, City of Avalon, my friend David's here, we're going to be shutting down the pumps tonight, at midnight?
One thirty.
One thirty, hopefully the flows will be low enough so we can make that crossover, that cross-connection, Jimmy Hoppin's already made a dry run, so it'll all go real smooth, and we're just counting on those flows being way down, so we only have to shut them off once to make the complete connection and then turn them back on again.
Pastor, what's your estimate for project completion, do you have one off the top of your head?
If everything goes smooth, you know, I think they should be able to backfill this, what's the date, Tuesday, hopefully the rest of the week, I really can't speak for Jimmy and whatever other irons he has on fire, but it'll all soon be a memory, they've done a good job.
Excellent.
They have.
Thank you, Pastor.
They've been working, they've been working constantly, every single day, it looks really good, I go by there every day, check it, they're doing well, they got, they got both, both manholes are finished, and they're ready, like you said, and they're working Sunday and every day, so Jim's done a good job.
All right, I don't have anything else. We're adjourned.
Say goodnight to Mr. Tony.
Good night, Tony.
I have a question.